Okay, we'll come back to order. Ms. Fox, will you read the next docket, please?
Docket PZ 18-006. Application has been filed by Ballard Glen HDC LLC for the approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen Section 3, consisting of 44 single-family lots on approximately 40 acres. The property is located at East Highway 22 and Ballard Glen Parkway in Smithville. The zoning is R1 Residential and CO1 Conservation Residential District.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Alvey, you have the staff presentation?
All right. This is a request for a revised preliminary subdivision plan. There is no increase in lots. This is basically just a road network change. The property is located at Ballard Glen Parkway. It is zoned R1 Residential, CO1 Conservation, and AG1 Agricultural. The Ballard Glen Section 3 is approximately 40 acres. History on the property, on March 14th of 2005, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request by Jordan River Development Company Incorporated for a zoning map amendment on approximately 258 acres from AG1 and CO1 Conservation to R1 Residential, AG1 Agricultural, and CO1 Conservation. Also, on that same day, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a preliminary subdivision plan for 184 single-family residences and four large tracks on 314 acres to be known as Ballard Glen. On September 26, 2017, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a request of a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen Section 3, which consisted of 44 single-family lots on approximately 40 acres. So this is the aerial view of the property outlined in red. This was the 2005 plan. This shows the entire development again. All of that is Ballard Glen. The area that was in question for Section 3, that was the original there, highlighted in red. So this is the layout comparing what was proposed in 2005 versus 2016. So you can see just the difference of the road network regarding, you know, the cul-de-sacs. And it also showed connectivity into the adjoining property where this main road came in and went into a cul-de-sac bulb. So again, so this is the plan that was approved in 2016. The applicant is proposing to amend the road network of Section 3 by stubbing the roadway into the adjoining property to the east and also at Lot 58 of Ballard Woods subdivision. There is no increase in the number of lots, and the revised plan meets all the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinances. But this is the 2018 plan. So you'll see that there are now, the cul-de-sacs have been removed, and there are two stubs for Section 3. There is no increase in the number of lots, and again, it does meet all the subdivision zoning and subdivision regulation requirements. So this is a side-by-side comparison of 2016 plan and the 2018 plan, to give you an idea. This is the recorded record plat for Ballard Woods Section 4 that was required in July 28th of 2005. It shows the stub from Ballard Woods subdivision into, it was known as the Miller property at that time. So that was recorded on Section, I'm sorry, I believe it was Section 3, not Section 4. Section 3. 3, yeah. Section 3. And again, that is, shows the connection there. So this is not to scale. This is just kind of superimposed there of what, this is the proposed new layout there. This is the recorded section for Ballard Woods Section 3 that showed that stub. And then this is the new location of the stub. And then also, this is also a stub into the future sections of the farm. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan for Ballard Glen Section 3, consisting of 44 acres, I'm sorry, consisting of 44 single-family lots on approximately 40 acres. That is all that I have.
All right. All right, we'll move into, do we need to do questions from the commission, or can that wait?
Just of staff.
Staff, questions for staff. Questions for staff, all right. Move into presentation from the applicant. Mr. Baxter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Again, Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street here in La Grange. I represent the applicant. Actually, I'm going to sit down fairly quickly and allow our engineer, Mr. Vinsan.
We'll need to get Mr. Vinsan sworn. Anyone else who's going to?
He's reminding us, and Mr. Shum has been previously sworn, but he can get sworn again if he wanted to.
Redundancy.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
And as Mr. Vinsan is the one who knows about the engineering here, I'm going to let him stand up and explain this application.
Good morning. I'm Bob Vinsan with Vinsan Engineering Land Surveying. My address is 306 West Jefferson Street, La Grange, 40031. I'm going to summarize real quick some of the things that Amy went over with the original approval of Ballard Glen Section 3 back in September of 2016. Both the existing layout in 2016 and 2018, the internal roads consisted of 3,500 lineal feet. The additional Ballard Glen Parkway in the 2000, I'm sorry, in the 2005 approval had an additional 1,000 feet. So basically, what we got approved in 2016, we were able to reduce the number of roads by 1,000 lineal feet. The average lot size was initially approved at 27,000 square feet. We, our revised plan gave us an average lot size of 25,200 square feet. There were seven and a half acres of open space in the original approval, and when we did the revision, we came up with 10.7 acres of open space. In the 2016 presentation, the Millers were present, and a part of what we agreed to was an access easement that doesn't show on, well, yes it does, I'm sorry, an access easement that was going to be constructed along here, which would give them access to the balance of their property, which was 157 acres. Now, this balance of 157 acres, our clients tried to acquire this property on numerous occasions. The negotiations never did become fruitful, and, excuse me, and because of that, our 2016 application showed a cul-de-sac terminating here, and we did not have any connectivity to the balance of the 157 acres except for the access easement down here that the Millers needed to get to the property. At the first part of this year, 2018, my clients did acquire the balance of the property, the 157 acres, from the Millers. And because of that, we need to revise the road layout so that we can access this property for a potential subdivision expansion. The number of lots has stayed the same in Section 3, and the amount of open space has remained unchanged, as I had previously mentioned. We met with Jim Urban and Amy Alvey on March 8th to discuss this plan, the revision to Section 3, and also the proposed addition, which would involve the 157 acres. And we also met with Scott Harris, the county engineer, on March 23rd with the same discussions. What we came up with for the 2018 application is based on their input upon good design and engineering planning. Okay. This drawing shows in red the portion of the road from the 2016 application that we're modifying. We are showing that the road will now be continued to the north to connect to the 157 acres, which is along here, sorry. And we're also requesting that the stub road be approved to the west that would connect with Lot 58. Lot 58 is in Section 3 of Ballard Woods. That lot is currently owned by the developer. He owns it, there's no lot, no house on it, or any improvements. It's just a vacant lot.
While you have this drawing, can you show, just point the commissioners to the location of the existing stub road in Ballard Woods?
Okay. I actually have another drawing that might help a little bit on that. In this drawing, you can clearly see marked in red, that is the existing stub road is located between Lots 54 and 55 in Ballard, excuse me, Ballard Woods Section 3. That stub comes into the open space as we have it laid out, and it's not really conducive to what we want to try to accomplish as far as making the connection between Ballard Glen Section 3 and Ballard Glen, Ballard Woods Section 4. Section, all right, too many Ballards. Ballard Woods Section 3 and Ballard Glen Section 3. So ultimately, what we're looking at here is moving, moving the existing stub road here between Lots 54 and 55 and moving it to the north where it would run through Lot 58. One thing I did want to bring up that I'm not sure I mentioned previously, when the Ballard Woods subdivision was approved, there was a binding element that a connection to the Miller property would be put in place, and that's why we ended up putting the stub road there between Lots 54 and 55. When Ballard Glen was approved, their preliminary plat does not show that existing stub road, and they made no indication, excuse me, that they would ever make that connection. So I just wanted to point that out. So basically, in summary, what we're looking for today is approval, which would allow us to connect our existing Ballard Glen Parkway to the north so that we can access the remaining 157 acres that our client has acquired from the Millers. And additionally, we would simply like to move the stub, the existing stub between Lots 54 and 55 of Ballard Woods Section 3 and move it over to Lot 58 of Ballard Woods Section 3.
Before you sit down?
Mm-hmm.
So this is the, the county's GIS system where they have overlaid the plat of Ballard Woods, showing the stub road that was on the record plat in that location, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, what you're talking about would be moving, just to orient them, would be to be moving the stub road to this location, and is there some reason why, and I'm drawing a line, is there some engineering reason why that there's a preference to move the road from this proposed location to the location up here?
There is, from both a planning and an engineering design point of view. If we move the access point up here, it lines up with the intersection of the existing Ballard Woods Drive and Ballard Woods Court. Anytime you can, you can take a road and make it a four-way intersection, you're better off than to create a stub. Also, topographically, the ground is much higher coming through Lot 58 than it is down here. And in order to access back into the property, we'd have to come through the open space, and we would have to cross an existing drain that's down here. If we construct the road up here, we get away from the creek crossing, and it's a much simpler connection.
Okay, and I have another question for you. So are you the, did you do the record plat for Ballard Woods?
Yes, sir, I did.
It's something that you prepared?
That's correct.
All right. Now, that plat, as I understand it, was put to record in 2005.
Correct.
And you saw an email that Ms. Alvey and Mr. Urban received from an attorney named Tanner Nichols that was sent Friday, that was forwarded to us yesterday, right?
That's correct.
And in that email, Mr. Nichols raises an issue about there being an alleged violation of the zoning regulation, which requires that in, when describing streets in a stub, it requires that there, that the plat indicate future access connection for adjacent development be put on the record plat for Ballard Woods. And that wasn't included on the plat that was put to record, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is the reason that that regulation was not in effect at the time that the plat was recorded?
That is correct.
So this regulation came into effect after the requirement that, or this requirement came into effect after you put that plat to record in 2005?
That's correct.
So if you put it to record today, you would include a requirement that it's a future access connection for adjacent development on the plat. But you noted the stub road on, on the plat as required in one of the binding elements for Ballard Woods, right?
The original application.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, those complaints came to our attention yesterday, and I'm sure that you're going to hear more about that particular complaint when Mr. Nichols, who has signed in and indicated he's going to present, stands up and speaks to you. But I wanted to make it clear that when the plat for Ballard Woods was put to record in 2005, this requirement that the stub road be noted with that particular language was not part of the regulations. So the plat did conform with the regulations at the time, and in order for us to be in a position to have it conform now, that would mean that every plat that is recorded on a recorded subdivision in Oldham County would have to go back and include that, which is impossible. Obviously, you're not going to go back and put that language on every single plat that has already been recorded in Oldham County. The stub road, however, which was indicated as a requirement in the findings that this body maintained relative to this preliminary plan, if you look at number eight, it required that there be a stub street included to the east line of the development, the Miller property, at approximately Lot 65 or wherever most appropriate. And so you had a preliminary plan that was presented that did not have a stub on it, and then when we went to record plat, we were obligated, as one of the conditions imposed by this body, for Ballard Woods to put a stub road as part of the record plat, which was done and which is shown. So that stub road exists at this point in between Lots 54 and 55, and we are asking to relocate that stub from that location to Lot 58 so that it lines up with a roadway, an existing roadway in Ballard Woods. So we're asking to move it from this location up to this location. And in addition, we're asking that we be allowed to stub in to the Miller property that was subsequently acquired. You know, we have a bulb up there at the, I guess that's the northwest corner, northwest corner, and we want to be able to continue that roadway into the Miller property. Another concern that was raised in the email from Mr. Nichols to staff was an issue that relates to something that, in my estimation, is not something that this body will consider, which has to do with the fact that the Ballard Woods Homeowners Association had a meeting, and they changed their deed restrictions, and they're going to claim that this is in violation of their deed restrictions. It has always been, I've stood up here many times and tried to argue that deed restrictions are something that you all need to take into consideration, and I've been repeatedly told that unfortunately, that is not something that you all do consider. It's not part of what you all do. You all are here to consider the regulations that are in effect for the subdivisions and for planning and zoning, and the statutes that may apply to that. So you're not here to interpret somebody's deed restrictions. So, you know, we're going to take the position that, that being the longstanding rule, that likewise, that's what ought to apply in this situation, and that's something that we will deal with them with if we need to in circuit court when the time becomes appropriate. But that's, that is our presentation about what our client would like to do, and certainly at the appropriate time, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Does anyone else present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into testimony in question by those opposing the application. Does anyone wish to speak or give testimony? Please approach.
To all stand? This one in?
Absolutely. Anyone who wishes to provide testimony needs to be sworn, please stand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Tanner Nichols, 400 West Market Street, Louisville, Kentucky. I'm here on behalf of the Homeowners Association, who engaged me last week to be before you this morning, to oppose this revision to the subdivision plat. First, I just want to say that the homeowners aren't opposed to the development of this additional development of Ballard Glen. What they are opposed to is this new connector road, where they're talking about just, the applicant will say, well, they're just moving a stub road over five or six lots from when it was originally opposed. Well, that's only half-right, that in the sense that these homeowners in Ballard Woods, when they originally bought these homes and decided to purchase lots there, there were private deed restrictions, which applicant's counsel will say that you all don't, may not recognize here, you're just looking at your, the zoning matters or the planning matters. But Kentucky case law says that planning or zoning may not relieve land from lawful covenants of restrictions. So Kentucky case law recognizes that, that zoning and planning aren't trying to, shouldn't overturn or be able to overturn lawful deed restrictions that people, neighborhoods, and lot owners, and homeowners, and property owners legally contract for. The original concept of Ballard Woods was it was going to be developed in phases, much like many neighborhoods and developments always do. And as part of that, the language allowed for the developer to have connector roads for new phases of Ballard Woods development. And so when you go back to that Phase 3 that they mentioned with, that shows the right-of-way, and I would say, I will, if you drive out there now, there's no stub road. It's shown on the tax map as a right-of-way, but right now, it's just a green space with no curb cut. But when it was originally planned, Phase 3 was originally planned, the developer was trying to purchase this land to do a new phase of Ballard Woods. And so that's what the homeowners here were contracted for, you know, had a legal contract for, and deed restrictions that, okay, if you're going to do a new phase of Ballard Woods, this is where it's going to be connected. I don't know if I can go back. There. And I think, I think she, Amy, said that this is actually Section 3. But the stub road that they contemplated there was for an extension of Ballard Woods, not to be connected to a different neighborhood that's under different and separate deed restrictions. And so that's what we ask. Additionally, obviously, counsel for the applicant raises a good point, that this, they didn't have, at that point, they didn't have to put on the plat that this was going to be a connector road. It wasn't a requirement at that time. But you can at least recognize the public policy concept of notice, right? That, that the homeowner should have notice about what roads will be connecting in the future. And so despite the fact that they didn't meet the technical rules that are now in place because they weren't in place at the time, it, we all recognize that the homeowners and the lot owners should have notice about where connector roads are going to be. So moving it from one place to another severely impacts the rights of those homeowners around the new location. This lot, so it's, this lot here, 57, is obviously going to be greatly impacted by a new road along this Lot 58. Lot 57 may have situated his house in a way, planning on having a neighbor, and if you look, if you can, if we can, if he's here today, when he speaks, he can talk about how the house is situated, and the house is built so as to contemplate a neighbor being, another home being on Lot 58, not a road. In addition, I, they talk about being a straight stretch in from, off this road. I was out there yesterday, and I don't know, and the engineer, maybe this can be addressed by the engineer, about if the road is going to be able to be built directly across and have a true four-way stop, if this were to get approved, or if it's going to be a situation where the roads are not directly across from one another, which can cause a traffic issue. I don't know if there's enough space, and maybe the engineer will have to maybe address that, to build it directly across and have a direct four-way stop. So I know I'll have a chance for closing and additional questions, but I want the homeowners to be able to have time to get up here and talk about. But it's a public policy, I just want you all to recognize that private homeowners and private property owners have the right to contract for deed restrictions, and that's what the homeowners thought they were getting in Ballard Woods, that there would be no connector roads to developments outside of additional phases to Ballard Woods. And additionally, think about the public policy concept of being able to have notice and being able to contract for what you know are in the plans, and not have the plans changed on you some 10 years later.
Who would like to speak next? As each of you approaches, we'll need to get your name and your address.
My name is Larry Myers. I live at 3902 Ballard Woods Court. I'm Lot 57. Several things come to mind about this. When I bought that lot, the house was already being, in the process of being built. And it was being built because Lot 58 was also going to be a residential property. It was going to be a house. Now, I don't know how you can build a road like he's talking, I'm not an engineer, but... Now, I don't know how you can build a road like he's talking, I'm not an engineer, but the way this lot goes, from right through in here, there's a ditch that starts a creek on down the road. This lot runs off this way at an extreme angle or slope. My lot runs, no, I can't get it to work here, that way. They, they run this way, straight across the street from the intersection, if you were to put a straight intersection in, the lot stays flat for maybe 70 feet, and then it starts at an extreme angle coming down this way, and then my lot is coming this way. So I would lose all privacy from the back of that house. I bought that house with privacy in mind. Now I get lights coming in the front of the house, but the house was designed on the lot not to do anything about lights coming in the back of the house, and every car that would come out of Ballard Glen at nighttime would be shining lots, lights into my house, and it would take a 40-foot fence to stop that because of the way the two properties, properties go down. Now, at the time, I knew about the easement road through there. It's never been a road, it's just grass they take care of, and I was also under the impression that was for the extension of Ballard Woods. And had I known, like I said, that if there was ever going to go, be a road on Lot 58, I would have never purchased that land because it just totally takes the privacy on all sides of my house out now. The other issue it's going to cause, I was in law enforcement for 32 years, the other issue it's going to cause through there is a lot, a lot of traffic coming up Ballard Woods Drive to cross over to go into Ballard Glen. With 44 houses there, I don't know how many roads, or how many trips that generates a day, but there's quite a bit, and there's young kids playing in there all the time. And it's a half a mile from our entrance up to Lot 58. If you go from our entrance to the entrance of Ballard Glen, it's a mile. It's a half a mile in and then a half a mile up. So you can see there's at least a, a mile and a half savings each way for people to use that instead of going in and out of Ballard Glen, which would have been the normal way in and out. So I think that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Are there any questions?
We'll come back to that. Okay. Who would like to speak next?
Rick Barney. Officially, I guess I would be Frederick A. Barney III on my property.
Address?
3708 Ballard Woods Court, I believe, right here.
Amy, can you give us some help with those graphics?
Your touch screen's not working.
Right there. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'm just standing here to express strong opposition to this access road. I want to reiterate that six-plus years ago, when I moved my family and three daughters into this development, it is beautiful, we did so for peace and quiet, we did so for safety, safety of my children, the many children in Ballard Woods, special needs children that live on Ballard Woods Drive. I was under the understanding that Ballard Woods might be expanded, but I moved into Ballard Woods, not Ballard Glen. No opposition to the development, very nicely done, but he opposed the access from Ballard Woods to Ballard Glen. This would diminish the safety of our, our neighborhood, increase the traffic, and diminish what it was we signed up for six-plus years ago. So I oppose this access road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Who would like to speak next?
Hello, my name is Erin Guilfoyle. I live at 4048 Ballard Woods.
You have a microphone?
Nope, no problem, okay. Erin Guilfoyle, I live at 4048 Ballard Woods Drive. I'm here representing the HOA Board of Directors. I'm currently a treasurer on that board. So a couple of points that I'd like to make today. One, we recently had an amendment to our deed restrictions. I know that's probably not a, sorry, we recently had amendment to the deed restrictions, and what we want to clearly spell out is the difference between the 2016 plan and the 2018 plan. So previously in our amendments, or previously in our restrictions, it stated that although this restriction applies to all owners of lots, developer reserves the right to extend any existing right-of-way through property owned by developer designated as an access area or designated as a right-of-way to link the roads to further development of Ballard Woods. That is what was agreed upon in 2016. What you have here is a potential connector road to Ballard Glen, okay, and that's been a bit deceptive for Ballard Wood homeowners because we had no intention of being a part of Ballard Glen. So in our recent amendments, we have developer may not use such rights of right-of-way, granting access to Ballard Glen or other developments, which would increase traffic flow through Ballard Woods. Now, as a director, we have done at least our due diligence, we believe, in making sure we amended our restrictions. We then went through and had our majority vote that has been notarized, that has now been filed with the county clerk's office. So this is a, a live and living document, so we are very proud of it because we have done our due diligence in stating this issue. So going forward, we do have grave concerns just from, from a perceptive or deceptive type piece. There is a sign in the front of our neighborhood today that says "Final Lots." If you want to buy that final lot of Ballard Woods, hey, there's three or four, five more available, and they're continuing to finish up that, that last piece. But unfortunately, it's no longer a final lots. This is now Ballard Glen. Again, specifically difference between Ballard Woods expansion in 2016, no problem. Now you have 2018 proposal through Ballard Glen. So please be, please be aware of that difference and, and how we feel unfortunately very emotional about that change.
Who would like to go next?
Good morning. My name is Robert Barnes. I am a property owner. I'm at 4028 Ballard Woods. Like Larry, I'm an adjoining property owner as well, so I am... Doesn't work?
It's not functioning, no.
That's why I'm on the other side, but Larry's not on.
Just draw.
Okay. So I brought, I bought this property two years ago as well, and was just informed that that was a residential property. We thought that a home would be developed beside our house, not a road. We're strongly opposed to the roadway as well, for two reasons. One, safety, as somebody pointed out, there's one way in, one way out. We think that's a very safe environment for our children. We feel that that's a very optimal reason that we purchased there. And number two, home values in Ballard Woods are much different, much higher than that of Ballard Glen. So we feel that it's also going to devalue our property. So those are the two main reasons, along with, you know, just the traffic flow that Larry had pointed out as well. So we would propose that the road would stay down here and attach only to future expansion of Ballard Woods, not connect to Ballard Glen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
My name's Andy Joy. My wife's here with me as well. We're at 3903 Ballard Woods Court. We're right there. So basically, we have the same concerns as everybody else. I'm kind of, kind of reiterate what we talked about, but we, we've only been there since about May of last year, so only about a year. But again, we bought the house knowing that, you know, there wasn't a road that's going to be connected. We're right there at the T, which kind of makes it safe from a vehicle perspective. It's only the people coming down to the T into the left or right Ballard Woods Court. So putting that extra roadway in, I don't know how long, excuse me, it takes to build 44 houses, but I'm not just thinking of our house on the corner, I'm thinking all Ballard Woods Drive, like Larry alluded to, from the beginning all the way up, and if that's how they're going to access to get in to build that development, that's a lot of heavy trucks, a lot of heavy equipment, a lot of pickup trucks coming through for them to build that development. And with my two kids there, along with all the multiple other kids, not just our house, but all of Ballard Woods Drive, to me, that makes it very dangerous. I don't know why you couldn't build Ballard Woods Glen from Ballard Wood Glen's entrance, why they couldn't come in that way. I haven't really seen Ballard Wood Glen, so I can't say. But Ballard Woods Drive is very curvy. It can be hilly right when you come in and come to the top, so you have to be very cognizant driving up that road and go slow. I'm not saying truck drivers and heavy equipment operators aren't safe, but that's a great concern if they're working late at night, early in the morning, those are things you'd have to look out for, so. And again, like Bob alluded to as well, you know, the value of our house, we bought it knowing per the specs of the development, that it was a good investment, and I don't know if the connection does devalue the house, I don't know that part of it, but if it does, then obviously that hurts our investment on the house as well, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Philip Schaaf, 3901 Ballard Woods Drive. I'm the president of the homeowners association for Ballard Woods, so this is obviously a major issue that I'm, that I'm dealing with, right? So lots of concern, lots of complaints, lots of worry, lots, you know, emotions, right? So, but I can't say I disagree with all of it, I mean, I agree with 100%. So we, we are not opposed to the future development of Ballard Glen. You know, the developer has the right to, to expand Ballard Glen as it is. However, has been stated multiple times, I did not purchase my lot, my house, in Ballard Woods to be a fair-through for another development. So where I currently live, 3901, is actually at the very front of the neighborhood. So imagine the amount of traffic that I see, right? So just from the traffic of the neighborhood by itself. So prior to purchasing my lot in Ballard Woods and building, I lived in Washington Manor in La Grange, okay? One of the main reasons, right, why we moved and why we purchased our house and built where it is, simply because no fair-through traffic, right? No traffic coming through from an opposing road. Washington Manor had two entrance nextes, right? People would bypass traffic in La Grange to go through that neighborhood. Major safety issue. So when we had children, we wanted to keep that, that concern, that worry down, right? I want to give my, my daughter the ability to ride the bike, her bike, on the road without opposing traffic flying through the neighborhood, which is already an issue as it is. So Ballard Woods, where my neighborhood is, where my house is rather, sorry, in Ballard Woods, it's, in the front of the neighborhood, there's a long stretch of road, okay? Traffic gets a high rate of speed as it is right now, because it's a long straightaway. 25 miles an hour is marked. I don't have a radar gun, I'm not a keen trained eye, trained eye in law enforcement. However, I would state that those vehicles already, already picking up speed from going downhill are going faster than 25, and it's already an issue that we as a neighborhood are addressing, right? One of the main reasons why I want to be the president of the neighborhood is to help issues like this, help safety of our children and our families, people who want to run, people who want to walk, jog, and use their road and their neighborhood with specifically the people in that neighborhood by itself, not fair-through traffic. I would also argue that the entrance and exit point of Ballard Woods is already tricky as it is. On Highway 22, I don't know if I can get to it, but where you enter and exit out of Ballard Woods currently is in a blind turn, okay? Ballard Glen's entrance is in a straightaway of Highway 22. Clear, open views of oncoming traffic. Every time I pull in my, in and out of my neighborhood, I'm worried about getting hit already on Highway 22. Major concern. So adding 40 to 80 more cars possibly going in and out of that entrance, I, I see it as a safety issue, right? Why, why to have that many cars that could come in and out of that blind turn with a high, high rate of speed, so 55 miles an hour is worth the entrances of Highway 22? I don't know, I feel like that would need to be reduced right there, just to maintain it. Also, as a county road, I feel like we need speed bumps, which I don't want speed bumps in the neighborhood, and I don't believe any other people want speed bumps in the neighborhood. So those are, those are big concerns. Also, if, if the developer originally planned on connecting multiple developments together, then I, I want to know why sidewalks weren't included in his development plan, right? Because now, as the president of the homeowners association, maybe we have to raise fees to look at putting in sidewalks, which we don't want to do that, right? And then also, a major concern that I have as the president is, when will that be adapted as a county road? How soon easements, who controls it? There's already two roads, two or three roads, in our neighborhood that are not county-owned that we have to maintain, okay? We do not have the funds right now currently to maintain, and we are trying to build that, that pot of money up. So I have major concerns as far as the traffic, that would even take toll on those roads, the people just possibly driving around, but also, how soon will that happen to be, that connecting road be a county road, and who has to maintain it, okay? So basically, in closing, I, I just want to point that I would not have purchased my lot, and it was already in the front of the neighborhood, I didn't realize that, but I would have not purchased my lot, built my house, if I knew we were going to connect multiple, multiple developments to this one, okay? So I hope, I hope you think of, of my children running and walking on the road, everybody else's children, because that's, that's a big concern for me, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaaf. Who would like to go next?
I'm going to make one more point. The other thing is, in speaking for the neighborhood, we did do a petition. So far, we had 79 responses of people who were opposed to this connecting road through Lot 58, and again, Lot 58, right? If you look at the, the sign, that lot is still for sale, so I would urge anybody to purchase that lot right now, just making a point. But, so we did a petition of 79 responses, all opposed of this, of this feature expansion or now new connection point, not the existing, but the new, so, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Please approach the podium.
I didn't swear in a minute ago, so I'm sorry.
We'll need to get you sworn in now then, thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Michael Rainey, 3913 Ballard Woods Drive.
Please proceed.
I just want to make two points. In case this thought hasn't occurred to anyone on the board, what this road does is turn Ballard Woods from a self-contained subdivision into, a subdivision that has a throughway through it. 22 is a major road, and this through, this, whatever you call it, connector road, is going to turn our subdivision into a throughway that adds 50% in traffic. We have about 80-plus homeowners, 44 houses in the new sub, in the new subdivision will increase that metric by 50%. The other thing I wanted to say, first of all, no one's opposed to Ballard Glen, that's great, but it's the throughways that we're talking about. I don't think there's a single homeowner, and there's about 80 of us, I don't think there's a single homeowner in the subdivision who ever thought or realized that there was going to be a throughway, and I can absolutely guarantee you that most people... And I can absolutely guarantee you that most people would not have bought their homes, at least on Ballard Woods Drive, had we known that. That's it.
All right, who would like to speak next?
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service, and you see, we brought our thirteen-year-old son with us this morning to watch local government in action. His twin sister is in school today, so she's going to be upset when she finds out he got out of school, so thank you for your service.
Can we get your name and address to begin with?
Sure. Brian Welch, we live at thirty-seven zero eight Ballard Vista Court. I agree with most of what's been said, so I won't repeat it. We bought for the same reasons in the neighborhood. We were under the impression that this was Ballard Woods, it was a closed community, um, wasn't going to be connected to Ballard Glen. We looked at Ballard Glen and we, you know, we- we didn't buy there because we liked Ballard Woods, the way it was designed, the way it was sold. These lots, I know we paid for our lots, but these lots, if you're not aware, went for seventy-five to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for an acre-plus lot. Expensive properties for a reason. People bought the per- the lots for a reason. They invested hard-earned savings and money in these lots for a reason. The- the community is now developed, so when we talk about the developer, I look at Walt as a lot owner. He now owns a lot. He has the same provenance and restrictions as we do as lot owners. We cannot build a road on our lot. We cannot connect our lot to another farm that we bought adjacent. We, as a matter of fact, we have restrictions that require us to build a house on our lot within a specific- specific amount of time. That lot has sat empty for, uh, we've been in there ten years, plus years. Walt is no longer a developer of Ballard Woods. He's a lot owner. He now falls under the provenance that we're explaining, right? No special rights because he bought the farm behind us, no special rights for any other reason. He has the same rights. Put me in that seat. Put any of the lot owners in that seat, and if we would come and ask for the same request. So for all the reasons and the reasons that hopefully I outlined, we're- we're not opposed to Ballard Glen, not at all. As long as he does it by your rules, we're not opposed to it. We're opposed to connecting Ballard Glen to Ballard Woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Please.
I think it's still morning. Good morning. My name is Bridget Johnson. I live at four zero one zero Ballard Woods Drive. I bought my home with my husband Mark and our three children, uh, July two thousand fifteen. I've been there almost three years. I'm out here from Southern California. I grew up in Anaheim, worked at Disneyland, had all that experience. So when we were looking at this part of Kentucky, we wanted something very different than what we had. Quiet, peaceful. Coming from California, we certainly had a lot of options, and we chose Ballard Woods. Um, I'm at forty-ten Ballard Woods Drive, so I am at the flat part of the street where people would prob- probably really start accelerating, know that this connecting road is in place. So I just want to mention that I'm here for Andrew, who's my nine-year-old. I'm here for Matthew, who is sixteen, who is learning to drive, and for my twenty-one-year-old daughter, who zips in and out and visits us all the time. It's a neighborhood where you can ride your bike. It's a neighborhood where you can learn how to drive. I was just with my sixteen-year-old waving at neighbors as he was learning how to drive, it was obvious. It needs to be a safe community because that's what I bought. If you haven't been to Ballard Woods, you really need to drive through to understand what a safety issue this would be, to understand that when I was there, three years ago with my realtor, this appeared as a lot. There's a sign that says the lot number. It didn't say it was for anything else. If you drive through, there's empty lots. Lot seven, or, excuse me, Lot thirty-two, it's one point three acres. Lot this, it's one point two acres. It very much appears that these would be all homes. I have friends in Ballard Glen. It's a lovely community, but I don't want it connected to mine, mostly for safety issues. So I'm here just to let you know that's my feeling, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please. Thank you. Did you swear?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Joanna Gooden, and I live at four zero three eight Ballard Woods Drive. I am a federal law enforcement officer's wife. I have lived in multiple locations in this country. I've lived in some of the dangerous locations, Washington DC. I've lived in Baltimore, Maryland, outside of it. I've lived in Nashville, Tennessee, and then I moved here. The government dictates where I live. But I, as a homeowner, drove four hours out of Nashville to this area of Kentucky to look for a home where I knew my babies would be safe, that I knew there was one entrance and one exit out of a neighborhood, that I could put the helmets on my kids and put them on their bikes or scooters and know they were going to be just fine. This connection is not something that was acknowledged to any of us. I've been there since two thousand twelve. At no point was I told that there was going to be a thoroughfare connecting my neighborhood to an adjacent neighborhood. I'm very familiar with that farmland. My property sits right on the back of it. Very familiar with that farmer. He used to, his tractor would break down, he would use my backyard to come through till his wife could pick him up. I'd give him some sweet tea, and we'd talk about what the plans were for Ballard Glen. And I'm fine with that. That neighborhood's a fine neighborhood, but that's Ballard Glen. I live in Ballard Woods. I had a dear friend walking about six weeks ago in her neighborhood outside of Baltimore, Maryland. It's a neighborhood that just recently was attached to an adjacent neighborhood. She was walking without earplugs in or anything. She was walking exactly the way she should, the opposite of traffic. Someone from the neighboring neighborhood that is not familiar with her neighborhood was flying through it, a sixteen-year-old, as she texted. My dear friend was hit from the back. She was hit from the back without even realizing the car had swerved out of the driveline and hit her. She didn't die from the impact of the car, she died from the thrust of the impact of the car as she hit her frontal lobe and died instantly, leaving her twelve, her ten, and her six-year-old children without a mother. I watched a federal law enforcement officer at his wife's funeral mourn her and could not quite comprehend how he had lost his wife to a driver texting from a nearby neighborhood so she could bypass traffic because she was late for school. I guarantee you, each one of you bought your residence for a reason. I would appreciate the same respect for the eighty-some of us that bought in Ballard Woods. And I thank you.
Who else would like to speak? All right, that would appear to be the end of the testimony and question from those in op- in opposition to the application. We'll move into questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Who has questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order. I have a legal question for our counsel. I've been hearing a lot of testimony on both sides that the application for this was originally for the developer on Ballard Glen to make the changes of the stub road, but I don't see anything as far as application for Ballard Woods, because that's where it seems like there's changes in Ballard Woods- Woods subdivision. So I'm just, was there application made, or does that matter?
May I answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Actually, I don't know what would happen if you approved this, but the stub road is in Ballard Wood, and if you approve this, the next thing that would have to happen for this to occur would be there would have to be a revised development plan for Ballard Wood to approve a stub road. I don't think you can approve a stub road in Ballard Wood on an application for, uh, a revision of a preliminary plan in Ballard Glen. So I don't even know why we're here, frankly, from a legal standpoint.
I guess that would be my question to the staff. I don't know how that was arranged.
I guess initially, uh, the applicant was looking at revising their layout for two reasons. One is this stub that goes into Ballard Wood, but also to stub into the adjoining vacant Miller property. So, uh, the point being that it would change the development plan for Ballard Woods is accurate, but it wouldn't apply if this wasn't approved by the commission. So Mr. Carter was right, that the next step would have to be that we'd have to look at the, uh, development plan on Lot fifty-eight.
Well, the- the problem with that is, is that this, it's not a straightforward application because when you come back with Ballard Glen, then you say, well, you've already approved Ballard Wood. You've already approv- approved Ballard Glen for the stub, for access through Ballard Wood. So then, what's the commission going to do at that point in time?
Right.
Say, well, we made a mistake? We didn't make a mistake. It wasn't pre- it's not been presented correctly. They should have put both on the same docket if they were going to revise both plans, so that the commission would know what was going on.
Agreed. The application does state that the stub road would be changed to Lot fifty-eight instead of its current location between fifty-four and five. So that is part of the application, but it isn't necessarily, I'm hearing the argument that it changes the conditions in Ballard Wood, but they, it was clearly stated that that's where the, uh, stub road would be relocated.
To- to follow up, and I know we have other questions, um, is- is the development of Ballard Woods completed by the developer?
Completed by the developer, uh, the applicant.
Obviously, he's using a lot that he owns.
Correct.
So is it, is the developer completely out of Ballard Woods? I mean, was that presented to staff that?
Believe that he only owns some lots.
Okay. So he's still.
Entire development has gone to record, regardless of who the owners of individual lots are. Entire development for Ballard Woods has gone to record.
Oh, it has. Can you help us with response to that question, please?
As the developer, you have better suited, honestly.
All of the sections, all of the current sections of Ballard Woods have gone to record. I still maintain somewhere between four and six lots in the development.
Follow up?
Please.
So your individual lot owner, basically, then, is what they, the opposers are saying as a developer?
Um, and I'm a, yes, the development still owns lots, and I own lots individually.
Okay. And were you aware of the de-restrictions that they had changed as a property owner?
Frankly, that came as quite a surprise last week when I got notification that the deed restrictions had been changed in March of this year. Uh, there was no notice, no notification as a multiple lot owner. I certain- certainly thought I would have been notified of that. That's an entirely different matter. Uh, and so is what you're talking about here, so if I can plainly answer, uh, your question, we are here today to realign the roads in Ballard Glen. We're not asking for an approval of that movement of the stub. We are strictly here to get reconfiguration to access the property. We're showing our future intent by realigning that after talking to staff and ascertaining that the location for the stub road, uh, from its current location to an intersection at the top of the hill would be, uh, much better for traffic flow. Uh, what we're looking for and what our application deals with here today is, Bob, or Barry, let's bring up the, uh, plat of Ballard Glen.
Is this in your?
So, uh, what we're, this is an interesting discussion, and it's a precursor to a discussion in the future that will probably be had, but what we're interested in is revising two thou- and what our application deals with is, uh, two thousand sixteen revision to two thousand eighteen. My instruction to the surveyor and engineer was, uh, let's talk to the county about potential realignment of that stub, which we now currently have a right to access, and put it in a place that makes more sense. The concurrence was that it makes more sense to do a four-way intersection at the top of the hill. Uh, we didn't, we did not perceive that you would grant access through Lot fifty-eight. Uh, this is much the same as it was in two thousand five or four, when the commission and the binding elements told me to put a stub road between two lots that yet didn't exist. Uh, that right-of-way does not yet exist, although we will in the future contemplate its usage. What we're saying is, uh, we could have eliminated that stub and come back in for a revision based solely on the access to the property that was acquired, the one hundred and fifty-seven acres. It was the feeling after meetings with staff and the engineer that the stub road ought to be at the top of the hill, not down in the valley that it currently resides. So we're not asking you today to deal with Ballard Woods. We're asking you to deal with a revised plat of Ballard Glen.
Mr. Douglas, anything else? All right, Mr. Horton.
Um, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate this time to think about tabling the issue until all parties get together and solve the problem that apparently faces us here? Um, council has said we're not sure why we're here with this application, and, um, if we make- make a mistake one way or the other, it may be a mistake. So would it not be appropriate at this point to, um, look for a tabling of the issue until all parties get together and- and come with the staff and, uh, get what may be a more appropriate application?
I will ask for input from Mr. Carter and Mr. Urban at this time.
A motion to table takes precedent of everything, on ev- over everything on the floor, so.
In other words, Mr. Carter just informed you that you can.
You can make a motion.
You can make a motion to table, and it stops it in its tracks, okay?
The answer is yes. Uh, I'd like to make a motion then, that we table this. Um, the, um.
I don't think you have to support your, uh, your motion, does he?
No support to that. Motion to table, then.
Immediate and undebatable.
Well, if there's a second.
We are looking for a second. Is there a second to the motion on the floor? We have a second from Mr. Finney. Um, the question comes to immediate, can we do voice vote?
Sure.
Immediate voice vote.
Show of hands would be.
A show of hands, please.
Are we going to have discussion over this?
It's non- it's non-debatable. This is a table motion.
You can vote in favor of tabling or against it.
All right, so we're going to go with show of hands. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
We can get a count, I mean, just hold them up there, so Ethel, look at who's got their hands up. One, two, three, four. Write down who's got their hands up, so you know who voted. Just give us a moment to be able to write down who voted and which way. Maybe we should have done a voice vote. Yeah, okay. Let's do a voice.
Back it up, Ethel. Thank you. We'll do the voice vote. Ms. Fox.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
No.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
No.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Docket PZ one eight dash zero zero six has been tabled by a vote of ten to three. All right. Do we have instructions for the stakeholders to approach staff and council for follow-up and additional discussion?
We will certainly do.
What is it that we're looking to answer in the dependency of the table?
You asking me?
Yeah.
I'm not a planner. I'm just a lawyer. But I think what needs, if you're, if you're asking me, I think what needs to happen is, if they want to do a stub road through Ballard Wood, then there needs to be a, a, what do they call it? A revision, a revision to the plan in Ballard Wood to create the stub road at the same time we revise this plan to connect through Ballard Wood. I think that's the only fair and honest way to do it.
Well, let me, let me say one thing. You said create. There is a stub road through Ballard Woods. If we are going to create a new stub road-
New stub road. That's what I mean, yeah. At the, at the location.
So, in other words, this location is already shown on the record plat. And if we're going to move it from that location-
Right.
Then we need to make a, a separate application as it relates to that.
Well, I mean, if you're going to do it, connect it through Ballard Wood, this, the other stub road, they can go through Ballard Wood, correct?
It does.
Does it?
No, it goes to the Miller property.
They're just relocating this, they would make a separate application to move the stub road to Lot fifty-eight.
Okay. Well, I think you would have to put both at the same time before the planning commission.
I have a question that I think is kind of important that some people may be thinking here. If for some reason they decided to use the old location of the connector road, which is already on the plat, am I correct? Would that then make it not necessary to involve Ballard Woods at all? And a plat could be approved to cook into the original road, and we would just deal with Ballard Glen?
They could, they would revise the Ballard Glen, Ballard Glen preliminary plan to show that connection.
Right, but that would just kind of erase the involvement of Ballard Woods. I just want to clarify this. I'm looking for information so that everyone-
Not from a perspective of notice.
Right.
But from a perspective of there's an existing stub street that's on the record plat.
They would not have to submit a change in their plat.
That's correct.
That's what I want to clarify for everyone present.
Correct, because it's already there.
All right, PZ eighteen dash zero zero six is on the table. We have just a little bit of business left to cover. Ethel. Guys, we'll go ahead. We're going to move into our next order of business.
Just a point of order. If everyone will keep your first docketed item that was tabled, as well as your information from this last case, I will not be disseminating that information again. So, keep the first one that was tabled from Great House Inc. for the residential use waiver, and then also keep this information and anything that is supplemented to this. I will obviously scan an email to you and provide paper copies as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Alvey. So, Mr. Urban, do you have something to tell us?
I do. Ethel is going to retire next Tuesday, and so if everybody would care to join us, we've got some food in the big conference room to gather around and wish Ethel good luck in her retirement. So, we have-
A big thank you from the commission for meeting with us.
So, there's food in the conference room next door.
All right.
Any motions?
We are adjourned.
Can I ask one question? You can ask. Can I ask a question?
If, if the question is, can we adjourn?
No, no, no. I'm not going to ask that one. I'm going to ask the clarification from our staff. Was that a mistake made in this last document? My opinion is no.
There, there are two opinions. Staff doesn't feel as though there was. They applied for a revision to the Ballard Glen subdivision plan. The notion that it would connect through Lot fifty-eight into Ballard Woods is certainly on the table, but you heard the applicant, Mr. Shum, say that specifically that wasn't what he was intending today. Can they move the stub road was part of the discussion. Legally, I think Mr. Carter's correct that there should be a revision to the Lot fifty-eight plan that would show that roadway. But like Ms. Bonet pointed out, they could have come in with a revised development plan or had done it originally and connected to that stub road in, in between fifty-four and fifty-five in Ballard Wood, and it would not be a discussion. The, the planning commission historically, I mean, it goes back decades, this discussion of connecting and not connecting and whether we should or shouldn't. Well, when Ballard Woods was approved, they were told specifically, put a stub on the record plat. I think it was Lot sixty-five because the lots were numbered differently when they laid them out for a preliminary plan. But basically, it was somewhere in this general vicinity. So, they put one in a place where they believed it would connect to the adjoining properties. And what the applicant is saying is that's not a good connecting point. And the idea is whether or not we have a-
And I know we're discussing, but my question was, I guess, but had it already been recorded to plat?
Yes.
And, and if it had been recorded to plat, then that binding element, whichever place it was going to connect to the stub road, might have been different. But since you already recorded the plat, feels like it's already the stub. You put the stub road where you said you were going to do it, and you just testified that you put it there, wherever it is. Think two lots, and now they want to change it. So, I don't know. That was what I was trying to get somebody to come, you know, whether, whether I-
Well, a point of order is, should we be discussing this, or?
We're probably crossing the line here.
Right. We're, we're probably crossing the line on having this discussion, you know. Yes. Motion to adjourn. I mean, you-